That way.
That's good.
All right, there will be no Manny should be here.
You're you're live. You're live.
Okay, there'll be no um Mr. Howson tonight, he's not gonna be here. All right.
What's your name?
Not yet.
Jim was just telling me.
Yeah, we're live. I looked up the Reagan.
I know.
I think he's right.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So Paul.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Got it, okay. Sounds good, all right, if I can get everybody stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to open up the Village of Cornwall Hudson's Board of Trustees work session scheduled for Monday, February tenth of two thousand twenty-five. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all right. Um, Doris, please don't let me forget when we go to resolutions, we need to go into a special meeting for that. Okay, all right. All right, so first thing we have at the top of the agenda tonight um is the Fire Department and the Board of Fire Commissioners um are gonna make a short presentation to us on two important matters. The capital reserve request and the tower ladder replacement funding. So who am I turning it over to first, chief or to?
Sure.
Mr. Chief, all right, chief. Okay.
Sit next to you, Bill.
Yep, by all means.
All right, I was late.
No, it's fine.
Oh, yeah.
Hello. Thank you. And I printed off um. I did, I think I did. I printed off the resolutions, yeah, I got the resolution, Jonathan. Okay, all right, where's the chief?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. All right.
So in your packet, I believe you have two schedules um for the apparatus replacement. Last year, we gave you a plan of.
Oh, it's in this one. Got it, oh, got it.
A plan of when the vehicles need to be replaced um and gave no guidance on how to do it. Um, it's millions of dollars of apparatus. This schedule, it's two different versions, you could probably do a hundred variations on it, but this is a financial plan of how to do it instead of just coming up against, okay, this vehicle needs to be replaced now. Let's bond it out. It's a capital uh replacement plan that anticipates replacing the vehicles over the next forty years. Actually, over thirty years, it goes up forty.
Chief, excuse me, is there is there a version one and two or just a version three and four?
Just a version three and four. Um, one and two was internal, um, we didn't like it, we tweaked it, tweaked it again and came up with three and four.
Three and four, got it.
Um, very, so going across the top, there are three purchases, the pumper tanker, which the board already approved last year. It's in the works. Um, the ladder truck, which would be next, um, and then the other engine. There's other smaller apparatus that would need to be replaced throughout the course of time, um, that could probably be handled in the regular um budget. These are the three expensive ones, yep.
And this does align with the plan that was presented by uh Mr. Uh, what was his last name?
Yeah.
Wilber.
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 Mike Wilber.
Yeah.
Yeah, not not date to date necessarily, but it it generally lines up. And then continuing across, it's refurbishing each of those apparatus. Um, so the first purchase, we know the pumper tanker is one point three million, we're anticipating one point eight for the ladder truck. And then a million and a half uh twelve years from now for the other engine. Um, and then refurbishing each of those in some subsequent years.
Charlie, just a quick question.
Yep.
The highlighted portions, um, the yellow um, the yellow portion at the top of each column.
The yellow portion is withdrawing the money out of the um replacement fund. So a down payment on the vehicle, if you will. Um, the blue section represents the ban, um, bond anticipation.
Yep.
And then um the the orange is the bond issue. And if you go across to the right of the page, it sums up what you'd be paying um for the debt service each year. So and the reason that you have.
All these numbers? Principle and interest, right?
Um, Bill Trainer helped us.
Wow.
This is at the current, uh, is this uh at an anticipated um uh rate of percentage?
Five percent of the loan.
Oh, that's high.
Well, it's 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 anticipated rate of the bond, it does not anticipate any interest on the capital funds.
Oh, I got you.
Similarly, it does not anticipate any increase on the cost of the apparatus. So inflation should take care of both of those if if the money goes into interest-bearing accounts. Hopefully, it keeps up with the rising cost of the apparatus. So version number three, yep, right where you were pointing to, Bill.
Yeah.
Um, that would be a painfully on version number three year. Line eighteen, twenty forty-one, three hundred, it's boxed out in the far right corner, three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars of finance costs.
And that that's principle and interest.
That's principle and interest.
Three because that's the year we get the third one online.
That'd be a heavy year. That's one of the reasons we went to version four, which is a higher, looking at year one, the capital contribution, starting it out with nine hundred thousand dollars instead of five hundred thousand dollars. It makes the annual debt service easier from year to year.
Wait, you're saying version four, right?
Ver- version four starts out higher with a nine hundred thousand dollar initial contribution.
Versus five. How much is predicated, Charlie, on the interest at the 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 borrowing interest rate on the ban? Do we know that or we don't know that?
I believe that's also five percent, isn't it?
No, I was just wondering this, that does fluctuate, don't we?
It does.
With just the economy, right?
It does, um, it does go up and down, he had to pick a number.
I get it, I get it.
Conservative number. And you know, there might be years where, you know, the interest rates are such that you just wanna take a bond instead of a ban because to lock in a lower rate.
Um, this might be a dumb question, the capital reserve balance, uh, what's the starting balance?
The starting balance would be the the year one contribution of.
Nine hundred thousand.
Oh, I see. It's what we're putting into capital reserve.
Yeah.
I see.
So you're starting with nine hundred.
That's that's an assumption if the village wants to do that on on version three, it's five hundred thousand. Um, depending upon what the payout winds up being from the engine that was totaled last year, that insurance contrib- uh, payment can go a long way toward those contributions.
Chief, if I may, um, one of the notes that Bill makes is if you go from five hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars, that's an additional four hundred thousand dollar investment, but you save two hundred and ten thousand dollars in interest over the course of the the ban, which in his mind is a pretty good return.
Yeah.
The additional four hundred thousand investment.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And?
Yeah, and the annual contribution could be a different amount, too, could be a hundred fifty thousand, could be two hundred thousand. It'll it'll chew away at, but I think hundred thousand dollars is reasonable, but the more you put upfront, the more it'll chew away at the debt service.
Uh, I still have to ask this, it's probably elementary accounting stuff that I don't understand, capital reserve contributions, right?
Where are you looking, Bill?
Uh, just on either.
Okay, just on the main column?
Yeah, same column. Capital, just definitions for me, uh, capital reserve contributions versus capital reserve balance.
So is it the con- the contribution would be putting in every single year?
From the general fund?
From 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 the general fund out of the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
So, right, okay, got it.
Um, could it partially funded by any ma- amounts that are left over in the annual budget if we don't spend it all down?
And fund balance.
And.
Well, that's where it'll come out of.
Yeah.
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 And the capital reserve is uh balance is just what's left over. So year one, it's a five hundred thousand contribution, and this is on version three, hundred thousand dollars brings it up to six. In year three, we're putting in a hundred, taking out three, leaves you four.
Um, I guess so. So we're creating a capital reserve under this plan? We don't have one, there's no starting balance that would be.
Well, that was reserved, but not for this project.
Set aside for the maintenance.
We would want that to be directed for this plan.
Understood.
And hopefully, future generations of uh trustees would continue that because this is what got us to this place. Obviously, not not anything we did, but we'd like to see it uh finally come to fruition where we have a plan.
Yeah, this is certainly planning for the future.
Right.
I'm uh, I I think I'm ninety-six years old when this schedule is done. I'm lucky, I'll be still driving those trucks, but I don't think so.
You Irish guys live a long time now.
I don't know if you guys are privy to to the knowledge of that, but how does it work in a fire district? When you have a fire district like the town has, how does that work?
They do this.
They ban it and then every taxpayer.
No, they may not ban it. They make a reserve.
They make an apparatus reserve.
There there are many fire districts that buy their apparatus cash. Because they're not, they're not, they're not fixing potholes, they're not collecting garbage.
Right.
They're there about the the fire service.
They set up a capital reserve for this and and they just take it right out of there.
Gotcha.
So this also has to be taken into account with the backdrop of the substantial repairs. Mm-hmm. That need to be done to. Yep. The firehouse.
Yeah.
Um, which I have, I can only guess, you know, is gonna be, I don't know, a half a million? I I I don't, I don't know, I mean, you guys have.
I mean, we we haven't climbed that mountain yet.
Yeah.
Still working on this one.
Depends on what you get done.
I I think.
Tarot is doing some work on it, right?
The way I'm thinking though is is.
But do we fund?
We've already purchased the pumper tanker, so I think what we have to focus in on is what's more important? Fixing the building? First, we have gotta find out how much it's gonna uh.
Did we, did we fund Ping the Tarot on that, Jim? I thought we did.
Hmm, uh, we, yes, we told them that they have, they're gonna, you told me the borings and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the work, yeah, I spoke to Dave Howson the other day, he's speaking to Jason about when that can be done, that was something that the captain came and asked me about is, when are we gonna get those cracks filled? But it's not as simple as just putting spackle in there. So he's gotta have a special team do it in.
Starting point.
Yeah, but that's we we've committed.
It's not a new building starting.
No, no, but what Jim is talking about is.
I know.
I had the pleasure of getting a full tour of the building, um, and it just, there's a ton of remediation that needs to be done, um, just a ton, just to bring it up to 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 standard, um. You know, we talked about a couple pie in a pie in the sky things, do we build a new building? That's probably a lot less realistic than making the repairs on the one there because there are things that for OSHA and things like that, chief, am I correct, with like decon areas and things like that, that we're gonna have to retrofit or some way to bring it into compliance, correct?
Yes.
So, all right, so as I see this, what you're essentially saying, cause I gotta boil this down to to dollars and cents per budget, we're looking at the village putting aside a hundred thousand, taking out the pumper tanker piece, which, but putting a hundred thousand dollars aside to put into capital reserve to put us on the path that Mike Wilber laid out to us. Is that essentially what this, and then how much we want to put down on things, how much we wanna ban out, how much, that that's all subject to decisions on the board, decisions with the fire commission and with the chief, um, but essentially, it is putting earmarking a hundred thousand dollars a year towards capital reserve for fire apparatus.
After an additional outlay of of preliminary outlay of either five.
Right, but we're talking about going forward, yeah.
And 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 if you make your initial deposit, let's say five hundred thousand dollars, and you were to put that money into the New York class, you're gaining, I think, what, Megan, it was like four point four percent?
Yeah.
You know?
Roughly.
That on five hundred thousand is twenty-two thousand dollars a year, so that offsets some of that hundred thousand dollars.
Five years, you have a hundred thousand dollars, Sam.
You know, um.
And and that's true, but you know, being transparent, we don't know what the cost of these vehicles are gonna be ten years from now.
Right, you said the.
Hopefully that.
If everything works out, it inflation and investment cancel each other out, so this number is roughly ballpark.
So I I wanna go, I wanna go, because I I get this, I think this is a good plan, I think, you know, we have to decide which we're gonna go with, but I think without seeing what the estimated cost is of the building, I I mean, that's the first thing. And then the second thing is, okay, which is more important? Is it buying a ladder truck or is it getting the building built fixed?
Without a ladder truck, we don't need a building. Without fire protection in the village, we can't live, we can't afford to live here.
Right.
For insurance purposes.
I, Rick, I I.
No, that's my opinion, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm ju- I'm just saying.
I don't think we're gonna be able to get a an idea on the building, it's gonna probably take eighteen months, twenty-four months just to get, I mean, look how long we've been playing with the with the engineer.
I get it, but at the same, we, I I know what you're saying, we gotta get, we have to get some sort of number.
We have a pressure to meet.
Well, that's more than abstraction, I hate to use that word, it is an abstraction.
Could.
Because there are going to be different options of going with, this is pretty hard and fast, other than that, he said, hey, when you get down here, you're not gonna know what that vehicle's gonna cost, it'll be in this neighborhood, but as far as the stuff on the on the firehouse, it's gonna be, what needs to be done, triage it first, and then what route do we wanna go?
Right, and and I think um initially, I think the board has to make a decision if they wanna start this capital plan, then that doesn't have to be predicated on a decision for a new ladder truck or.
No, I don't have a.
You you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And then if you decide, and that gives us some time to work with the engineer to make that decision.
No, I agree, I agree with the capital plans, just like the capital plan for for uh for the sewer and stuff like that, I don't have a problem with that, it determining what we're gonna put up initially upfront. What I'm just saying, though, is you could start off this capital plan and then, okay, we have the money, and you were talking about eighteen months, okay, a year from now, eighteen months from now, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a better figure to go by.
Mm-hmm.
And I think depending upon what that number is, is that maybe pushing out the purchase date of the of the ladder truck. If the ladder truck, if we decide that, okay, these things are more important in order to fit the ladder truck in or whatever it might be, so I get it, I'm I'm on board with the capital plan, it's just, I just wanna see what, a year from now, we're gonna, we're gonna have a better idea of what the number is, and we'll have done our initial contribution into the capital plan.
Exactly. And then we have to look at it and say, okay, which is more important right now? Is it fixing this building and then delaying the purchase of the of the veh- of the ladder truck for a year or two years?
Right.
That's the way I'm looking at it.
Essentially, visually, you're saying add another column for the building and see where it fits in the in the.
Yeah.
Well, another, another column for the building.
It's all.
This this, this does not anticipate the building, for sure.
Yeah, oh, God. Yeah, and 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 the other thing is, if we go with the ladder truck, we got the specs today, they said thirteen hundred day manufacture period, so you're almost four years out.
Yeah.
So even if you were to order it today, you'd be waiting four years.
Yeah.
So that all plays into it, too.
Yes.
You know?
So I think the immediate uh action item at the, if the board is amenable to this, immediate action item would be to um approve a budget line of movement of money from our available fund balance into a budget line for capital reserve for apparatus pur- uh purposes. And then for the board to approve setting up an account for night class to put this money into every year, and we'll just let it ride. Does anybody see anything different as being the priorities if the board is amenable to this, to the priorities of what we need to do action item wise?
Uh, this is out of our uh unallocated fund balance that we'd be moving this, right?
Unallocated available fund balance.
Fifty-two percent, forty-eight percent, whatever the but annual budget, so it's, what do we have in there, two?
What are we, two point three?
Yeah, I would, I would say maybe two point two.
Two point two million dollars, you're talking about moving a hundred thousand, um.
Well, no.
No, it's not a hundred thousand.
Either nine or five.
It's not, yeah, it's either nine or five. Well, you're talking to.
We presented it as five and nine with two examples, you can.
We don't, I know, we can choose whatever, I get it.
But I'm saying, beyond that, every year, it would just be a recurring one hundred thousand dollars that goes into the account.
Right, an initial outlay.
Yeah.
Official outlay is gonna be a bit more.
Initial allocation, it's not an outlay right away, it's an allocation right away, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and and sort of um establishing a capital reserve, uh, this would be a question for Jim or Joe, there are some magic words necessary to establish a reserve, capital reserve, and once the money goes into that reserve.
Can't be touched.
These is a cap- correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that capital, the building is capital, too, right?
Well, not, well.
Just apparatus.
Yeah, I don't know.
You could call it capital for modern farming use.
Yeah. But that means if there's a catastrophic incident or event that happens in the village, that can't be used as a piggy bank to, you know?
Right.
Handle things that.
It's allocated, it's or it's um.
Look, I think with regards to the building, I don't think we necessarily have to, I think the capital for this, the apparatus, yes, but for the building, until we get a bitter beat on that, if we need to determine it, look, it may be, it may be less, I mean, I'm around a number, five hundred thousand, it could be a couple hundred thousand, and we not, we don't necessarily need a capital to reserve for that, we can get that done.
Yeah.
Um, we could ban that out, too, but we don't need the capital reserve for, but just to lock this in, yes.
Yeah, I mean, the annual, the annual hundred thousand dollars would be easy, the question is, taking the, taking the huge hit, and obviously, to Mike's point earlier, you know, you do the bigger amount upfront, we obviously save and.
Yeah, and 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 understand, that that initial five hundred thousand, how much, I don't have it in front of me, how much is getting drawn out of that in a year and a half?
Three hundred.
For three hundred of it.
Yeah.
You know, to pay down on the pumper tanker, it's gonna be delivered in December of twenty-six.
Right.
Question also.
Which is gonna reduce your bonding and reduce your interest.
Um, the first year listed here is last year, and we didn't establish a capital reserve last year, so are we, these dates changed by one? Should this be twenty twenty-five now, year one?
The 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 first contribution, yes, um, the end of twenty twenty-six is when we're expecting.
Still near, right?
Right, so it it may not come until twenty twenty-seven.
We're already behind.
And and that first contribution of a hundred thousand, that may end up being the proceeds from the insurance check for the for the apparatus that was damaged, so.
Yeah. Right, I'm do, I'm saying the fir- the initial.
Yeah.
Balance is is dated twenty twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we would be looking at six hundred thousand in twenty twenty-five or a million in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
If we were to catch up with ourselves.
Correct.
With this.
I just, I, yeah, I just, I I get nervous thinking about taking just under half of our unallocated available fund balance, I mean, I understand all the arguments for why taking, you know, biting the bullet first, it it makes sense in the long run. I just don't know if we could do that in 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 good conscience, knowing that there could be something catastrophic that happens, you know, again, water infrastructure stuff is handled by the water fund, everything else is handled by our Gen A fund. So I'm almost inclined to say that my vote, looking at these numbers and just not really absorbing everything, but looking at this thing, would be to say, if we were gonna do something, I think five hundred thousand dollars to start would be a, would be about where I'd be comfortable more.
That's that's more powerful, and I think it's like your mortgage, I mean, it doesn't mean that you could make an extra payment.
Right, right, right.
See, you're from balances. You're in a good position, you could throw a couple hundred, you know, another hu- an extra hundred in, so.
Yeah, it's just the initial one that would.
That's the one that's the.
Yeah.
A difficult one, but.
And what was the estimate of the, you know, between the, if the, if you front load, we'd say like two thirty thousand, two hundred thirties or something?
So over the.
Hundred and ten.
Where's that number? I have to do math again?
Yeah.
This is the one, two ten, five hundred?
Uh.
It's the difference.
The difference between the three twenty-seven, five, and what line is that?
Yeah, that's the.
Line eighteen.
That's the thing, cause you get on, you know, it's hard to look across, cause you know, the box, like that one had the box around it.
Yeah.
If if you.
Got it, yeah. Okay.
Unfortunately, the cannon has been kicked and kicked and kicked, we know, we all know that, right? But now here we are.
That's.
That's why we got the, that's why we got the pumper tank.
That's just for that one year, that's just for that one year that you circled?
Yes.
But if you go down to the bottom at the totals.
Difference between these two.
It's it's a.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Difference between four thousand, four million five hundred twenty-eight thousand and five million one hundred thirty-eight thousand. I got you, um, yeah, I think, you know, I I think I would be comfortable at, you know, doing it at the five hundred level to get started, I I don't know if I could go to nine hundred thousand, just.
Again, it's it's just two representations, right, you can go.
You can do different numbers, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I don't think we have to decide tonight, I think we're all on board.
But it gives you some caution.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, the the.
Yeah.
Capital reserve, that is agreed. And this this plan also, both the financial and the the Wilbur plan, takes into account of reducing the the fleet size, you know, like.
Because you're coming to consolidate.
Right.
Brakes, right?
And then when we buy that second engine, the third piece there, we're gonna consolidate again, another, the the small rescue with that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so you're gonna be reducing it further.
Um, is it how hard or easy, or I could maybe try to do it myself? This lays out what we expect to do for the major purchases that we've done on an ad, more or less ad hoc basis more recently, can we see what those amounts have been and how much we've borrowed against and how much we've laid out so that, you know, so you can put this in proportion for us so that we look at it and go, oh, okay, putting aside some of our fund balance for this is gonna be essentially what we've been doing, but it's just with a more.
So the the.
Plan, you know what I mean?
The the prices have changed considerably since we made those purchases, the the cost of fire trucks, a- and they're just all old now.
Cause it's all been twenty-five.
It's all been twenty twenty, but just as a a short window perspective, um, the the pumper tanker that we just purchased now for a million three, we looked at about six or seven years ago, it was about seven, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars now, um.
And the last, the last purchase we made, Charlie or Mike, was back in. Oh, four. That's the last purchase?
Yeah.
Wait, but when I, when I first came on the board. Bought the ladder truck. Used the ladder truck, right. So. When we get it for like six hundred? So in oh four, we bought the.
That's what I thought you were getting that, Bill.
In oh four, we bought the engine.
Previously. The, uh, it is, but I sort of, to your point, it's been kicked down the road, if it's been twenty years since we made a purchase, you can show me the numbers.
So in oh four, we bought the engine for six hundred K, we bought the tower ladder, the current one, used in two thousand twelve as a twelve-year-old rig for two hundred fifty.
Okay.
And what we wanted to do with the ladder truck is what we initially wanted to do in two thousand twelve, the cost then was seven hundred thousand, it's now one point eight million, twelve years later. Um, historically, the village has always bonded the entire amount, and it's always been tied in with other projects in the village, whether it be a water main or a sidewalk project or DPW equipment. There's never been a single.
And just so you understand, when in two thousand twelve, when you guys came to us, we were six or seven million in the hole.
Yeah.
So there was no, there was no, yeah, and you guys did the right thing, came back, we got a used one, so it's.
Yeah.
Serves us well. Okay. Megan, can you run by Justin, just uh the adjustment that taking five hundred thousand from our, I mean, projected fund balance, obviously, we gotta get through this year, but to say, hey, if this is where we're at right now, does that put us, what's the percentage in the numbered, and should we be comfortable with that? I think I know the answer, but I think I'd like to hear it from him again. Okay? All right, what else, any other questions from the board to for um for chief or the chair?
No.
Thanks for doing that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Oh, we saw that plan, what are we?
Yeah. So this is good.
All right. So I guess where are we now, moving on to um monthly department reports? Why don't we just do the uh fire report since since you guys are still here?
Okay.
All right, I wanna do anything to uh highlight and add or turn the board's attention?
Um, just to add, the system chief already mentioned it, we did just get today the um proposal from Seagrave Fire Apparatus to remount um a used aerial scope on a new Seagrave chassis. We haven't reviewed it yet, there's not a price in here, so we're gonna go over the specs and make sure that they meet what what we uh need.
Okay. Okay.
And hopefully we'll be back.
Has that, Charlie, has the gentleman that we contracted with last month.
The insurance estimate?
Yes, has he looked at the vehicle yet?
Don't, you might know more than me.
I I do, so he wanted payment upfront. Uh, Megan and myself and Paula, we arranged to have payment upfront, I emailed everything out to the guy, I have not heard back. I said, hey, we need this invoice corrected, it shouldn't go to Slump Canyon Company or, I'm sorry, to Chris Whitten at the law firm, needs to come to the village. Here's a voucher you got to fill out, have not heard back.
And is it, is the reason why the cost of that appraisal is so high because it's a specialized appraisal?
I, I don't know. I don't know, that's a question for the attorney, he's money found him.
Yeah, the attorney suggested that, so we thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, but what was the total on that?
There's a couple.
Two, two grand, yeah.
Worth the, worth a shot.
Yeah, right, two on two hundred.
He anticipated.
We're we're off by about two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, yeah.
A good chance that we'll get something, more than the three thousand dollars.
All right, anything else on your cheek that we should, uh, pay attention to?
I have a Steve Colomari.
He recently moved back to the village, he's.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay, very good, all right.
And and our crew, uh, we went to New Bern again, our crew did a fantastic job getting to some difficult. Stuff on the roof of the building that we were operating, great job.
Excellent. All right, any other questions from, uh, trustees? No, thank you, gentlemen.
You, thank you, Charlie, thank you, Rick.
All right, Madam Treasurer, the floor is yours, since we've been talking about money, right up your alley. What you got for us?
Let me just run through the report.
I mean, anything?
I don't, um, nothing stands out. They said, um, you want water for the village and town, um, revenue centers.
Do you start charging the new water rate yet?
Um, we're starting over with Nai class.
So Mike.
So for the month of January, we. Collected or earned three thousand one dollars ninety seven cents and that's with the interest rates dropping. Um, we went from, I believe it was four point five or four point six to the four point four.
Okay.
Um, so total, it's about thirty three thousand dollars that we've earned in thirteen months.
And the reason why we don't lock those rates in is because that money is, is is available to us when we want it. Yeah, so they don't lock rates in for us, okay? Mike, quick side note, I know I asked you this the other day, um, Dave was just asking, the new water rates kicking on which water bill?
That would be they started on January fifteenth, so when we issue our bills, um. This month for some of the high consumers, um, of the, that are owned by municipal, municipal buildings. They'll have anywhere.
Okay.
Attached to the bill.
All right, any questions for the treasurer? Oh, all right, thank you, that was easy, painless, okay, um, the building department, what did, is Manny here?
Going back to the office and said call me.
He said he needed me to call him? Oh, I misunderstood, I misunderstood, I thought it was related to that one particular issue, I did not know it was related to the.
I mean, I guess I didn't either.
But I'm, I'm, he's probably better served taking care of stuff down there right now, because we got a lot of stuff, I know, following up, all right.
Pleased to see a solar panel inspection, I've not seen one in a year.
Yeah, and no stop work.
Oh, that's on Clark Avenue, I think.
Is it? No stop work orders is good, two violations, so, okay, moving on, chief, where are you, chief, behind me? Chief, what you got, what any, what to point out to the board?
Um, just during the month of January, I also bundle, sort of, agree, got full tended. Standardized field sobriety testing, uh, training certification course at the Orange County Police Academy. And also, but also attended, uh, breath analysis operator training certification course, also held at the Orange County Police Academy.
Excellent. One traffic summons is issued this past month.
Twenty? A lot of speeders, yeah.
Well, that's all the fifteen warnings and then they did it again, so they all got it. Are those concentrated in any particular, the the problem areas we've identified with the help of residents over time?
Mostly Clark.
I'm up and over that hill so fast.
Clark used to go all the way.
Um, River Avenue, we're still posting there?
Uh, I don't think we're written there, but.
Haven't as many complaints since people have slowed down a little bit.
With the snow.
Okay, all right, all right, nothing else to the chief, okay, that was easy, um. Mr. Halverson is feeling a little under the weather, so he's not going to be here tonight, but I think he's listening in and if we had any. Major issues or questions, we could reach out to him, he said, but, uh, obviously, at this point in time of the month, we do not have tonnage.
I wanted it.
I know, I know. But you can see all the things that they still are working on and our guys do a great job, especially with the pre-treatment.
Very good job with the snow.
Can't speak tonight, the pre-treatment of the roads and all the, and all the, um, plowing that you're.
Yeah, they knocked the sidewalks out quickly too.
Yeah, they do, really do, okay, um, all right, that's that, moving on, Water Department, Michael.
Um, we're still out doing the leak detection, I'm looking at the report now and and our consumption's up.
Do we have a meeting scheduled, I I briefly talk, told the board and executive that we had that leak down there on Shore Road and that. Our engagement with the town, do we have a date set on that for that meeting that follow up?
Okay. We're still, I have still have to get in touch with the property owner.
Got it.
That's attached to that line.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So we're still out doing some leak detection at that time of the year, um, let's see, what else we've got on here?
Mike, let me just. So now that I'm thinking about, sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
The, the pipe that goes down to sewer.
Yes.
That one's going to replace, that had significant leaks, right?
Yes.
Oh, so out of, how many? You, you gave us an estimate, how much, how much unalac- unalloc- not unallocated.
Unallocated.
Yeah.
Or unaccounted.
Unaccounted for.
So.
How much of you of that?
He has a number for you.
So I'm thinking it's somewhere between seventy five thousand and a hundred thousand gallons a day.
A day.
So that's like a, almost a quarter, because I think you were telling we losing four hundred thousand or we losing eight hundred thousand?
No, 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 we're, we're, we're up about a hundred and fifty thousand total.
Is it coming through the ground?
Than where we should be at this time of the year.
Okay.
Um, but that, that.
Daily?
Yeah, and that's why the guys are out every day looking, they got some noise down in Cliffside Park, which seems to be a problem area for us lately. Um, but that particular line down there for sewer plant was installed in the mid sixties when sewer plant was built. It's so badly deteriorated that I think it's been leaking for such a long time. That we truly don't know how much it's leaking because it's been built into our daily numbers for years.
Um, yeah.
You know, um, because as soon as they replaced thirty feet of it, they turned it back on, more leaks popped up.
Yeah, it, it looked a lot like that pipe up there.
That's exactly what it was. So there's about seven hundred and fifty feet total. Um, when we spoke with the town, they're, they agree that the best thing to do would be to extend the eight inch water, public water main.
Yeah.
At their cost and then dedicate it over to the village for maintenance and that would also allow the property up on the hill to tie into it as well. Um, and then.
And the new development to tie.
And also to work with the new development, so it's, it's not something's going to happen overnight, it's going to take six months to design and get approvals. So we got to work on a temporary connection for the house on the hill and.
Uh, for definitely, for, uh, we, they, we just, I heard about this line. It's, it's a supply line to the sewer plant to be used for.
Whatever they need.
Water, but it doesn't, I was, for a second, I was like, wait a minute, am I insane, does it actually process sewage? But no, it's the water they use for other stuff.
They have domestic use water for their employees and bathrooms, sink, they also have a well on site which they use for processing.
Okay.
Process, processing.
But they did say, was it Sean that said, Mike, that they can go, that the sewage treatment site can go for a month?
They can go a few months shut down because they can rely on their, their well.
Well.
For processing, so, so.
So you, but you can just replace that service line?
They got to put in a whole new main.
Okay.
Because the health department won't let them put a two inch back in.
Oh.
Um, and then just looking at the report, um, we installed the new transfer switch up at Maple Road Tank. Um, and last month, we ran into three heaters at the Black Rock Filtration Plant. Um, they ran into some mechanical issues, one of them actually burnt up during the overnight hours and ended up with a fire department response. Um, the alarm went off, um, so we're looking into getting those repaired. Short term, but replacing them with a more efficient heat pump rather than these electric heaters.
And, uh.
The generator's transfer switch, that's the one that we, it's one of the first things that I recall doing on the board, right? Was authorizing that purchase and it came, it was wrong and just.
Yeah, and and the funny thing, we put it in and then the next day, we had a problem with the generator now. So we're working with the generator company to get that repaired, but we got temporary up there and so on and so forth.
Mike, the electric heaters at the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant, when you say need of replacement, are those like floor units that you plug in?
They hang up on the ceiling.
At the top, okay.
They're four hundred and forty volt.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, no gas, that's why we're going to look into doing heat pumps up there.
Okay.
A little bit more efficient, um, and then aside from this, I think Doris may put in your packet there, an annual report. You know, we g- we give you a monthly report, but when you look at all the numbers total for the year, you know, we did almost a thousand mark outs. For other excavators, um, we did eighty, eighty excavations, we had over five hundred in-person visits with the public. So it's just, I'm a numbers guy and I like to put numbers to things.
Very good, who, uh, who was it that, uh, hosted the Cornwall third graders at the Black Water, Black Rock Water Treatment Plant?
That's our chief operator, Don Bry, they do that every year, um, they've been doing it now for probably. Close to fifteen years.
Good, very cool.
Well, my eighteen year old daughter just got asked that question at college, can you identify the water source for your community and understand how it arrives at your tap?
She didn't say Ring's Pond, did she? Hey, can I call my lifeline?
By the way, uh, just, uh, pulling up information, my wife was, uh, wants to know why the water bill's going to New Jersey.
I could answer that, so the bank that we use that collects the payments, they actually run tests. As to how quickly the mail gets sent from here to to their post office boxes nearest their office. And New Jersey is actually where they've located the lockbox and it gets emptied, I think, Megan, what's it like, twice a day or something?
Well, I didn't, what did you say?
The, the lockbox in Jersey.
Yeah.
Banksy, they, twice a day.
But you can still pay here though, too, right? Yeah, very confusing.
It is, I was confused when we used to send a New York State D E C a payment check to Philadelphia every year.
Yeah.
But now I understand.
Yeah.
I will say that that was messaged by the Water Department in the letter that initially explained the, uh, new system.
I'll summarize it some. But that's like, I mean, for years, and I think it's still that way, like mail in New York City goes to the Morgan, um. The Morgan Post Office and then gets sent up to Albany to be sorted and then gets sent all the way back down to Manhattan.
Well, if I mail something from home to here, it goes to Albany or White Plains.
Yeah, all right, Michael, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, um, EMS services, um, I think, you know, I think at the business meeting I mentioned that. Um, and I was right on the number and I'm usually careful to say, don't quote me on this, but that what we're paying New Windsor EMS went up ten thousand dollars a month. We decided to make that deal earlier than the July first new three year deal that's going to go into effect. And obviously, I explained the reasons why we're, we're assisting a little bit more, we still get the best deal around. Trust me, I, I look into all the different contracts with municipalities around here and the fact that we were the. That we were the first in to do this, I think we really made a difference and it's just such a, such a great operation. Um, there's a paramedic now at the one Clinton Street, um, location, um, daily and, um. Bill, I forgot what's the latest on the, on the, um.
They hired.
Yeah. They already stay, but but do we hear anything about staffing at last month's meeting?
Yes.
What did they say, have they already started to staff it?
He said that they did make, they did make a hire, I think they had two positions, which I had sent around the job description that I found on their website.
Yep.
And it was staggering to me the low pay for the, what they were asking for, but he said there were two positions, one was supervisor and one was the. Operator and it was, you know, like the sort of on-call person, I think they both end up on call.
Yeah.
He said they did finally find one.
Yeah, I may get it wrong, but what he said was it was somebody from within that qualified for. Specific elements that were in that requirement list, um, so forgive me if I'm wrong, but that's what he had said.
Discussion with Supervisor Bedetti on building repairs for twenty twenty five, that's a nice building and a newer building, obviously, much newer than our. What's our, our, the original fire building is nineteen oh three and then this. Nineteen twenty three and then nineteen seventy eight was the base, good.
Is the, uh, Cornwall station will continue to operate at least eighty percent, are we not? I thought they were staffing it full time.
The chief just corrected me, it's nineteen oh four, the original fire company building.
Okay, I thought it was oh three for some reason, but okay, oh four. Yeah.
It has horses.
I don't know what that means, Bill, I'll, I'll, I'll circle back to Chief Big, I don't, can you operate at least eighty percent?
Changes being made with.
Does that mean, well, maybe if they go out for a fall, they don't, they count that time, is nobody in there? Maybe, maybe, Dave, okay, um, that's that, all right, so. I'm going to make a motion, um, to go into a special meeting to conduct resolutions, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, all right, okay, all right, so we're officially in the special meeting. Um, I spoke to Dave Halverson today regarding the firehouse kitchen, obviously, that is one of the first. Repair, replacement upgrades, long overdue remediation, um, Dave has a second. Company that he is in touch with, has not gotten a quote from them yet, is working on that, um, we are going to table that resolution. And we will handle it at the February twenty fourth meeting, um, he'll, he's doing his best to get us a couple more quotes. But he's going to get one more, remember, we're talking about a, a project that's going to cost somewhere around twenty four thousand dollars.
Which one is this, Ken?
It's the firehouse kitchen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the top one.
Yep, all right.
Okay, all right, approval of the revised tax levy, um, okay, who's handling this, Doris, Megan, Doris, you're handling this?
Yeah.
You want to just explain to the board, um, what we're looking to do?
The only change is the omitted taxes, um, three thousand three hundred eighty nine dollars and eighty cents. And that has to do with, um, houses that have been sold in the village, um. Where the new owner is not entitled to the, uh, tax credits that the previous owner was. So the village gets that money back.
Okay.
Those are houses that were sold where the, um, exemptions are taken away from the new owners because they're not entitled to them. And that's the only difference on the, um, in, the only line that has been amended.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I can just read this resolution as is?
Yeah.
A resolution levying the total taxes and other charges extended and levied against each parcel of real property shown on the roll, prepared and verified. By the assessor for the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six fiscal year. Resolve that there be levied and assessed against a real property, the village of Cornwall and Hudson, the following sums for village government and other charges for the fiscal year. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six with a tax rate of seven dollars per, seven dollars and eighty one cents per thousand of assessed valuation. I don't know if I need to read all those other numbers, um, and as per document.
Yeah.
Um, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions of the clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is the C S C A contract with, um, with the clerk and Doris. This is just related to the minutes or the resolution and or how we're leaving it, is this something we're going to do on the twenty fourth?
I'm, I'm thinking we might have to waste.
All right, so, so essentially what happened was the village board passed a resolution extending that, to. Extending that to agree to the contract extension to the C S C A, which they had, we had. An agreement in principle with them. They still have to ratify it. We obviously know that I've signed it. The two members of C S C A, one representing the Water Department, one representing the D P W have both signed it. Rebecca Bloom, their negotiator, has signed it. We have that. But there was a date on the contract that you might have pointed out, or one of you pointed out at the last business meeting. That said it began on March first and then goes all the way through February twenty twenty-eight, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-eight. We wanted to do February first. I spoke to Andy Stakers today, who's representing um, the C S C A side of things. And Andy said, no, actually in the contract, the way that it was worded is this only relates to pay and compensation. That we're gonna go back to February first. They didn't wanna change the contract itself, let the rest of the contract.
Yes.
On begins on March first. So of course that puts the deputy village treasurer in a pickle because she has to figure out how to do this, so the guys will. Get paid beginning on February first, but they won't get their their full check. It'll just be given to them in a, in a, in a later check in the month of February. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything else on the board's end. We have a signed memorandum of agreement with them. Obviously, we will get a full contract back from them that'll be signed by all the parties, but I've signed it. They have signed it. It's done deal. It says March first, two thousand and twenty-five to February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-eight. The only thing that's retroactive to February first is the compensation, the numbers that we had agreed to in the contract. Okay, so whoop, I took three of those off. Okay, next item, water system master plan. So, um, gentlemen and gentlelady, um, you all have a copy of this, if you recall. Um, you know, the village paid, I believe, like eighty-eight thousand dollars for this, Mike. Um, we approved that back during Mayor Coin's tenure, but the, but the project was completed. Um, it's completed a while back, but we had waiting, waited for written comments from. You know, our attorney, from uh, board members, from me. In actuality, most of the comments and the changes came from the Water Department. So this is the completed and finalized December twenty twenty-four. Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water System Master Plan, so. Um, the only changes have been added to this in a sense are the ones that have come from the Water Department. If anybody has any questions. Mike, the the changes too were, as I recall, and it's been a while since I read this, were.
Uh, primarily it was um, updating some numbers. You know, they had some uh, numbers that were a couple of years old. Um, we had changed out some water mains already on uh, Mill Street and Chestnut, so we updated some water main sizes and whatnot. So just like clean up stuff, inventory.
Yeah, I did, I I did see there's some recommended, like, scheduling for.
Repairs.
Repairs. But it doesn't have a nice step diagram with the capital reserve amounts next to it that says how much we should expect to pay every year. Where does that come from?
You'd have to speak with Justin.
Hey, Mike.
But no, in all honesty, that is something I should get together with Megan and Justin, who should probably plan on that. You know?
I know that the trustee's got a a bound copy of this a year or so ago, but.
The new ones are in their mailbox.
There you go. All right, good. Okay, I just wanna make sure that they got the finalized December twenty-four, twenty twenty-four edition. The other one now is obsolete.
You know, and and you'll notice the first five years, we're already underway with some of the capital improvements. Um, such as the Maple Street Water Main Project, Angola Road, Hasbrook Avenue. Um, and I know we've spoken, Megan and I spoke with the mayor about New York class, putting some water fund money in it. To start, you know, to start earning some interest that'll help us pay for these capital plans. Cause quite honestly, the the interest rate that you're you're getting from your investment is more than what we're paying out in dam.
Yeah, I um, Mike, I agree, and I wanna say, what do you have, close to two million in unallocated fund balance?
I think it's like uh, two point four, I think it was.
We only put a hundred thousand from the, from the Gen A fund side. What are, what are thoughts on?
No, 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 we put like six or something.
Yeah, like. What did I say? What did I say?
Hundred thousand.
No, eight hundred thousand. I got stuck on a hundred from that uh, from the fire apparatus one. We put eight hundred thousand in. Um, at this juncture, I mean, we've probably, how long have we been in this now? Thirteen months? At this juncture, I I mean, I don't know if the village board wants to consider moving some more of our unallocated fund balance over to that. And Mike pointed that out and I said, we should do at least what we did for the village on the water side. Are you in agreement?
Six months.
All right.
And I think by the time this fiscal year.
What are you saying?
I think we should wait.
You should, we should wait?
Yes, I think we should. See how, see how the economy does in the next six months, just in general. But I, that's just my thought.
Oh.
But the um.
Is there something coming that we should be worried about?
Doing some. You know, equalizing essentially the level of risk to the extent that there is risk. You know, I think we we, we found it was um. Found it was tolerable to do the amount of investment that we did on the Gen A side, so I I think that.
Yeah.
I s- I agree that it's tolerable to do that on the water side, we should do that.
You're saying, no, don't do it.
I was saying, don't, don't ex, don't expand our investment on on either side, like.
I got what you're saying.
I agree. Some in there, but.
Got it. Uh, is the board comfortable with doing the same then, doing eight hundred thousand?
I, maybe Megan and I should speak with Justin and get his opinion, because I am quite honest with you, I think by the end of this fiscal year. The fund balance may be up around three point five million, wow. Because we got a lot of FEMA money that came in that we're still working on projects and we're not letting that go in there and gain this interest.
Right.
While we're designing the projects.
And and keep in mind, you know, people that say, well, you shouldn't have that much unallocated fund balance. When your budget is this, or why is there so much in that, in the water fund? Because a major catastrophic. You know, infrastructure repair that needs being made. The dams. The damn dams. I know, I know, so that, that's why, but okay, um, I'm good. So you both know, builds board is good with that, so I'm I'm assuming it will require a resolution when it has to happen, but you guys can move forward with that. Okay, um, that was, oh, Mike, real quick. Do you wanna mention anything about the Water Supply Emergency Response Plan and or the vulnerability assessment?
So I provided them to you and the deputy mayor, because you had expressed some concern about.
Yep.
The security of our critical infrastructure. Those are plans that were required to put together um, for the New York State Department of Health. We do it, it's, gets reviewed and and updated every, we review it every year, but a major overhaul gets done every five years.
Um, I will have one of these, a copy of both of these in my office, and any trustee that would like to come see them. These are confidential. Obviously, we're dealing with security assessments and vulnerability assessments. Um, so we don't want this, you know, necessarily made or out there for public consumption, you know, it's like telling somebody on the internet how to build a bomb. Um, or, you know, where your vulnerabilities may be, but if anybody wants to come in and read it, I'll have a copy of it at my office. All right? Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Um, next item is set public hearings for the four tax exemptions. So funny thing happened on my way up to the tax assessor's office in the town to inquire about an exemption. And then realizing that the town had, you know, just recently passed exemptions for veterans. And my question, and it got battered around up there between the assessor's office and the collector's office and. And the clerk's office and people having different thoughts about it, I asked um, our village clerk and our um. Our village clerk and deputy village clerk to research this as well. We then asked our. Do as well, since the village is not a tax assessing authority. Do we need to pass the resolutions that they do in the town? We do collect taxes and obviously we're part of the town. Um, we really couldn't find a solid answer on this. We don't think it is necessary, however. Um, it doesn't hurt to do this, and while Joe, our attorney, is still researching this. Felt it was important to do it now. Doing it now will not make it available in twenty twenty-five. Why is that? Because this has to be in and done by March first. And in the interim, we have to have a public hearing, we have to have a certain amount of time, ten days, or is it ten days for um, noticing of that? Um, so it would not be done by March first, but again. You know, it's, I don't know why we haven't done it before, but there's four of them. One for first responders, firefighters. One for um, disabled people, one for senior citizens, and one for veterans. So there's four of them here. Um.
We did pass for uh.
We did. For the first responders, correct. But this is something, uh, Mike, what was the difference in the reason of what we had done before versus doing this again?
So when the initial law was enacted through New York State. Um, apparently they did not allow for local ta- local taxing authorities to give. The property tax credit to residents who volunteer in neighboring departments. So like, for instance, you have somebody who volunteers in the town fire department, but they live in the village. They're not eligible for a village tax credit. They come here, they help us, we help them. The town is doing it because right now we're not getting it on our, our members aren't getting it on the town tax bill, so the town has done it. Um, so we're looking to do the same thing to give it to our neighboring departments that come here and assist us, like up on Stable Way. We had five different fire departments there. Um, so we're looking to to make sure that the members that are in neighboring communities that assist us are also eligible. On their village tax bill if they reside here.
Okay, gotcha. Got you. And if they, do you have both pages on on these, Jim? Because the second page refers to sewer bill and so um. I do, um, okay, yeah, so I have them right here. All right, so let me, let me do them one at a time and I'll try to whatever I can do as per document. What's the best way to do this, Jim? If I do the first one, let me do the veterans first.
Does it, does this apply to, so if I understand correctly, it doesn't matter for the first responder one or the fire department one. It doesn't matter where they serve. Anybody who's.
The village boards in in the actual law, they're gonna have to decide which department to give it to.
So N Y F D and stuff like that.
The chief can speak to that.
Well, N Y F D is not volunteer. Generally, I think it would be the members.
I can read, I don't care.
Battalion.
They go to different sections of the law.
West Point's part of that, but they're not volunteer. Port Montgomery and Highlands Falls. I don't think anybody from Port Montgomery or Highlands Falls lives in our village. But those would be the battalion four departments, and those are the folks who come most frequently to our.
Thank you. And it's a handful of people, really, chief, right? Veritable handful.
I, I think we do it too.
Yeah, all right, so let me start with the first one again. Joe may come back and tell us that this.
So, just so you know, I, I am, I, I picked the March first at nine AM, but I wasn't sure. I had to put something in there and I don't know if that's date is good for a special meeting.
Okay, um, looking to see where that is listed.
Second page.
Second page here. I see February twenty-fourth at seven PM.
He put in, but that's not ten days.
Okay.
March first is ten days and I just picked nine AM arbitrarily.
The senior citizen one, Jim, Scott. Okay, let me go to senior citizen one, that way, okay, this one. Has, no, this is February twenty-fourth on it as well.
Cause you printed straight from Jonathan.
I printed straight from Jonathan.
Jonathan did not have ten days.
Okay.
I had to put, I changed it.
So what date do you want me to use?
I just picked March first at nine AM, but I don't know.
So that's the date we wanna use? What, and i- is that a weekend?
It's a Saturday morning.
It's a Saturday morning, um.
If that's okay with the board.
Actually be out of town.
Well, and and, yeah, I, I, let's just set it, why don't we just set it for the business meeting in March? Since we're not gonna make the cutoff anyway, the cutoff is my.
I'm sorry, um, are we fourteen days out from our business meeting in February, right?
But it's gotta be noticed and then it's.
Cut off for the newspaper, I.
That's the problem.
So they wouldn't be out until.
Yeah, it's just the timing of it.
Yeah, okay.
And Bill, again, if, you know, if I hadn't have stumbled into this, we'd never done this. We're doing it now and we don't even. We don't even hundred percent know that we have to do this, so let's just set this for our March business meeting. Is that okay? Cause it's not gonna make the cutoff, so we're not gonna, okay. But at least it'll be done and then next year, we won't have to do it again after it's done this time. All right, so I'll read the first one, which. Will be for veterans, whereas section four five eight dash A of the Real Property Tax Law of New York State grants the village authority to adopt the local law. Providing an exemption from real property taxes for veterans. And whereas the village board believes it is in the best interest of the village to amend chapter one four five and offer such an exemption. Whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend chapter one four five. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the village board hereby determines it'll be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed. Local law or the project in accordance with New York State's Environmental Quality Review Act or SECRE. And part six one seven, the regulations implementing SECRE, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved, the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECRE. And let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law, amending the sewer. Sewer fee billing procedures and to receive. This isn't.
Take that. All right, so what, you're doing the, you're doing the veterans, hold on.
How did this?
Um, that's concerning.
This is this, this is a different one. This is the one on the billing lining things up. Yep, so. And part six one seven, the regulations implementing SECRE, we see, nope, they all say the sewer bill.
Okay, so after you go through part six one seven, then it's resolved, the village board hereby, everybody classifies the action as unlisted. Okay, then the following paragraph, you've got that a public bearing gearing be held, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
In order to receive comments and suggestions regarding proposed local law, which would amend. Chapter one four five of the village code to add article five entitled alternative veterans exemptions. Um, on March first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Receive any comments concerning.
Yes.
Potential.
Yes, but I already said that.
Okay.
All right, that's at the top. And then at the village hall located three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York. And as further resolved, the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notices, said hearing to be given as provided by law.
And you said which date?
March first, two thousand. No, no, no.
No, March.
March twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
You're sure that that's the, the date?
Should it be? No, seventeen, right? Cause we have a regular month next month.
I don't, we don't usually have the meeting before.
Election.
The election. I don't think our meeting, we.
Do we?
I don't think we.
The meeting is on the twenty-fourth in March.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we normally.
Because all the machines are gonna be in there.
Correct.
Okay, so, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, now I'm just gonna have to just paste that in in my mind and. All right, so the following is a resolution scheduling a public hearing to amend chapter one four five, article three of the village code. Concerning tax exemptions for voluntary emergency services personnel. And so whereas the village board recognizes the valuable services of volunteer emergency services personnel in the village of Cornwall Hudson provided to the community. Whereas these volunteers absorb many costs in connection with training and certification for their duties. And whereas section four six six dash F of the Real Property Tax Law of New York State. Grants the village authority to adopt the local law providing an exemption for real property taxes for volunteer emergency services personnel. And whereas chapter one four five currently provides such an exemption to volunteer emergency services personnel residing with the, within the village of Cornwall Hudson. And whereas section four six six dash F of the Real Property Tax Law of New York State. Was originally amended to allow such an exemption to be extended to volunteer emergency services personnel serving in neighboring jurisdictions. And whereas the village board believes it is in the best interest of the village to extend such an exemption to volunteer emergency services personnel. Who are members of an incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated volunteer ambulance service. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend chapter one four five. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby determines it'll be the lead agency with respect to SECRE in accordance with New York State's. Um, SECRE Act and part six one seven of the reg- regulations implementing SECRE, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved, village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECRE. And let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions. Regarding the proposed local law. Local law, um. Yeah, cha- uh, to amend, to schedule a public hearing to amend chapter one four five, article three of the village code concerning tax exemptions for voluntary. Emergency services personnel, bless you, um. The proposed legislation in accord with. The proposed legislation in accord with SECR on the date of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM at the village hall located. Three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York, and it is further resolved, the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given. As provided by law, may I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Alright, third, um, this is a resolution scheduling a public hearing to amend chapter one four five, article one of the village code. Concerning tax exemptions for senior citizens. Whereas the village of Cornwall Hudson offers a real property tax exemption for senior citizens. And whereas section four six seven of the Real Property Tax Law of New York State. Grants the village authority to adopt the local law providing an exemption from real property taxes for persons. Age sixty-five years or older and whereas chapter one four five currently provides such an exemption. And whereas section four six seven, the Real Property Tax Law of New York State sets. Income limits for senior citizens seeking an exemption but allows municipalities to increase those income limits. And whereas the village board believes it is in the best interest of the village to amend chapter one four five. To allow for an increase in the income limits for senior citizens seeking exemption. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend chapter one four five, now therefore it is hereby resolved. The village board hereby determines it'll be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law. In accordance with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECR and part six one seven, the regulations implementing SECR. Since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, let it be further resolved. Those board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR, let it be further resolved. That a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law. Yeah, to amend chapter one four five, article one of the village code concerning tax exemptions for senior citizens. Um, in accord with SECR on, on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM at the village hall located at three two five. Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York, and is further resolved, the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed. To cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law, may I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Lastly, resolution of the village board of the village of Cornwall Hudson scheduling a public hearing to amend chapter one four five. Of the village code to add article four entitled, quote, exemptions for disabled persons, close quote. Whereas section four five nine dash C of the Real Property Tax Law of New York State grants the village authority to adopt. A local law providing exemption from real property taxes for disabled persons. And whereas the village board believes it is in the best interest of the village to amend chapter one four five and offer such an exemption. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing and introductory local law to amend chapter one four five. Now therefore it is hereby resolved, the village board determines it'll be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local or the project in accord with New York State. Environmental Quality Review Act or SECR and part six one seven, the regulations implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved, the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR and let it be further resolved that a public hearing. Be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law. Um, amending chapter one four five of the village code to add article four entitled exemptions for disabled. Two thousand and twenty-five at seven PM at the village hall located three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall Hudson, New York, one five two zero. And is further resolved, the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second? Further discussion? Thank you for bearing with me, thank you for bearing with me on that, and again. This may not be necessary, but the bottom line is better that we haven't done. Okay, alright, next item is, oh, we moved on to other business. Um, tax credit in the clown, in the clown, tax credit in the town, Madam McClark.
We took care of that with the resolution.
Okay, appraisal of the water treatment plant.
Michael. Um, so we've been trying to find a company to do the appraisal. We've contacted three, they've all declined.
Why?
The original company, um, the gentleman is no longer in business, so I reached out to one of his partners. They thought about it, they decided they're not interested, they gave me the name of another company who said. They're not interested, so I'm working on a fourth.
Is it, uh, is it because it's a specialized and labor intensive kind of process?
Cause we're also gonna need an engineering report to go along with it.
Presumably, we pay a commensurate price that's at the rate they set.
They could, they could do the engineering report, they can't do the appraisal. You know, um, and, and they, they actually thought that if the plant is obsolete, then. The value of it may just be the value of being proper. I did have one question, your resolutions, did you do one on the, for the sewer capital stuff?
Oh, it's in here.
That's for, but that's, um. We already teed that up, didn't we do that last month?
I thought we did.
Now, it's for, yeah.
Oh, we have the public hearing for it.
Correct.
February twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
I just took care of that, right? That was another item under other business.
Yes. Okay, yeah, um. Okay, um, next item is building inspector, um, less than full-time position. Um, the village board is, um, going to, uh, is going to. Post a position for a full-time building inspector, since we don't have one, we've always had a part-time or two part-timers. Um, and then we're going to, um, take a look at the list and go off of that. Yes, Paula's working on it, she's worked on it with Manny this morning, um. And then we're gonna have to post a position and Manny's gonna have to compete with that position since. He's looking to do a full-time position, but do it in a less than full-time capacity. You can't do that from the part-time position to less than full-time, it has to be full-time to less than full-time. So he'll have to compete, he'll have to take the test and then we'll, uh, we'll go from there, alright? Okay, um, next item, the Donahue Park Cornwall Central High School passes, um. So I got a, a, a reach out from, um, Charlie, um, Charlie Hannes. Um, who came and spoke to the board, um, he was a student that impressed me at the civics fair with a plan and. Um, he sent me some, some items for consideration, pretty much along to, you know, alongside what we had talked about at the meeting, I just wanted to get the board's sense. I think I read the room well enough to feel like the board was amenable to, um, some type of, of parking sticker for students. And for, you know, students to be able to, to use the park for free, did anybody have any? Think about it afterwards or think no or something, cause if not, I'm going to draft up a resolution. Um, I'm going to talk to Charlie, meet with Charlie about it and then I'm gonna present it to the board for passing. Um, a change in fee schedule, that's all it requires, an amendment to the.
Yeah, I just think it's not very complicated, it's just.
Very simple.
A high school aged licensed driver in a household means they get one pass for the household, right? I mean, that's kind of a, and, and for the, only for the year in which that student is, is licensed, there'll typically be a year. Maybe two years, right?
Yeah, I, I, you know what, I just think it would be too difficult, you know, with the, the student could bring their student ID here, show it and then get it. I don't wanna add to the police. Wait a minute, is the student ID on the dashboard is, well, we gotta, they got enough on their plate and.
And, and we should say, it doesn't affect the daily parking rate that you get through the app, which is a, a higher rate. This is get your permit.
This is if you make the trek up here to village hall, we would have a, a, a sticker that. Um, is a student sticker, which means.
Well, no. Just allows one per household, per licensed student age.
So we would not have to, we would not have to come up with a.
Yeah, there's no new nothing, it's just.
That makes, makes the clerk's office easy for them, it's, makes it easier for the chief. You're really not.
It, that was the thing in the paper, it didn't really make it clear. It's five dollars per year.
And the day for your horse is how much?
The, the burden on them is, you now have a task, which is go to village hall and get your pass. If you, yes, you can have it, but you've gotta do some.
Exactly, um, yeah, and I think, um.
Oh, and, and I, my thought was also the age, uh, rather than the, if somebody is enrolled in a different school, but they live in the district. That, that it should extend to the students who are active students in the district.
Oh, yeah, I think what we looked at. I think, well, we said high school and undergraduate.
Did we?
Didn't we say that? I thought when we added that, he said, he said, well, high school and undergraduate. Yeah, I was gonna say, you gotta, alright, but you got a kid that's, you know, goes away to school the first year and they're still, they're an undergraduate, I mean. School of hard knocks.
Oh, here we go.
This is being West Point cadets, they're not gonna, they're not gonna.
Do you know what it's like to sit down at the waterfront when it's a hundred degrees out there in your gray cadet. No one wants to do that, no, trust me, no one wants to do that, alright, so. So are we gonna include undergrads? Bill's not feeling undergrads, you're not feeling undergrads.
I have two.
Well, I know.
One's a master, my son's a master's candidate.
Alright, alright, I mean technically I am a student. Wait, did you say fledgling or allegedly? Don't say that in front of my wife. I thought he said fledgling, I said, I'm that too. Um, alright, so I'll work something up and we'll, we'll pass a resolution, I'll invite Charlie to come back so he can. See that and then he can go back to school, make that announcement there, and I am gonna make the, remind me to. Ask them for the commitment that, um, students that need volunteer hours. Plenty of things, River Sweep is perfect in the spring, would be a perfect thing to kind of get them engaged, but alright, I, I got some work to do on that, I'll handle it. Okay, um, is that it? Okay, yeah, I guess so, alright.
That's for next month.
Yep, yep, okay. Alright, well, with that having been said, um, let me go through for your information. Fire commissioner, uh, uh, meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners, Tuesday, February eleventh at six PM, that's here in village hall. Donahue Committee Meeting is Wednesday, February twelfth at six PM, because there's two, two meetings at night, cause River Fest is, are, is also meeting. River Fest Committee will be held in the work session room that night at seven and the Donahue Committee, cause it's a bigger committee, will meet in the village boardroom at six o'clock. Village Office will be closed for President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth, which is next Monday. Planning Board Meeting, um, is scheduled for Tuesday, February eighteenth at seven PM back in the village boardroom. Village Board Business Meeting, Monday, February twenty-fourth at seven PM. Chamber of Commerce and trustees, I would encourage you to swing by if you are able to. Will be holding their monthly meeting, they do a breakfast meeting and they're gonna do it here in the boardroom. Um, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at eight o'clock. Voter Registration Day, Saturday, March eighth, from twelve PM to five PM in village hall at the, in the boardroom. And Village Election Day, ooh, it's gonna be a barn burner, huh? Is, uh, Tuesday, March eighteenth from six AM to nine PM, and might I remind three of you? That you need to get your petitions turned in to the village clerk, no later than close of business, that's right, they, Bill was, took care of it. Um, no later than close of business tomorrow.
Filing Friday, you can collect through tomorrow.
I'm going with what the clerk said.
No, the cover letter.
You better start.
Okay, I didn't realize there was a difference. Okay, alright, any, uh, any alibis? Nothing, looking around the table, alright, I'll go, uh, Jim, anything? Bill, anything? Dave, Lori, Beth, no alibis?
Uh, just for the board's knowledge, I'll be out of town February twenty-eighth to, or twenty-second. No, not Key West, but it is Florida.
Alright.
Gonna go watch the Yankees play the Red Sox.
Oh, and by the way, I should not mention, uh, Association of Towns. Deputy Mayor and I will be down for Associations of Towns, leaving this weekend, this upcoming weekend, coming back on Tuesday. So it's obviously, it's a holiday, so we will be down in the city.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Thank you, everybody, Chief, well done on the presentation. Oh, would you stop it? It is perfect.